All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening on a cold, cold night. Welcome you to the regular meeting for the Belvidere City Council, January 3rd. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Burerton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal is absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present?
Okay, thank you. If you join me for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, and our freedom. We ask that you be with the men and women that currently serve our country and our military and the many veterans who have served fighting for the freedoms we have. We thank you for them. And we thank you for our first responders, both police and fire personnel, and pray for their safety. We particularly pray that you will comfort the family of Bradley Illinois Police Officers, Sergeant Marlene Rittmanek, who was murdered in the line of duty, and Officer Tyler Bailey, who was shot in the line of duty, whom we pray for his full recovery. We ask that you give us wisdom, patience, courage, and compassion as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We ask for these things in Christ's name. Amen. Okay, item three, do we have anybody registered?
No, we do not.
No, item three, public comment. Item four, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of December 20th, 2021, as presented. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Flurry. Any corrections? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passed. Thank you. We have a public hearing under item A, which is the vacation of the portion of an alley generally lying north of 121 North State Street. So we'll open up the public hearing at this time. We opened the public hearing for the record at 7:04. Is there anybody who wishes to address or speak during this time? It was published, notice of public hearing was published on December 9th in the Boone County Journal. Okay, nobody here, so we will close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. Item six, under special messages and proclamations. I did want to, before we go to the presentation that we have, excuse me, before we go to the presentation that we have from the Boone County Health Department, I would like to discuss, have Chief Heiser, if he doesn't mind, discuss an issue that we're facing with Station One downtown. So, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. On December 15th, Boone County, Belvidere endured winds in excessive 70 miles per hour. Early in the morning on December 27th, a thunderstorm with high winds and excessive rain came through Belvidere. During and just after that thunderstorm, the on-duty crew at Firehouse Number One reported water coming into the bedroom through the vents in the ceiling. The on-duty captain went up to the roof at daylight and discovered the damaged roof. Unbeknownst to us, the roof damage must have occurred during the high winds on the 15th, but without any precipitation until the 27th that went unnoticed. The roof had eight to 10 feet sheared off the entire 30-foot width of the northwest corner of the station. It'd be above the bunk rooms or the bedrooms. An insurance claim was submitted, and I called Freeport Industrial Roofing for a possible temporary fix. We're waiting for the insurance adjuster to come out and survey the damage either Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. In the meantime, myself, Captain Laterno, and Lieutenant Draw went up and put tarps on the area affected. This is a Band-Aid fix to the problem. Our next thaw could possibly bring more water into the affected area of the firehouse. Freeport Industrial Roofing has been in talks with us concerning the damages. They are one of the companies that provided us with a quote back in September for a new roof. Due to COVID challenges, they were unable to do the job citing roofing materials shortages and also being way behind in their previously scheduled jobs. Freeport, at that time, they quoted us $42,500 to do both roofs at Station Number One. In our conversation with Freeport Industrial rep Paul Hofer, he recommended that we do the affected apparatus station roof as soon as a break in the weather occurs. This portion of the roof would be $23,500. There's some other accessories that we'd have to discuss another time here. Then in the spring, we could do the administrative side. The accessories, I can do that right now, actually. I have it in front of me. Thank you, Shannon. Altogether, it would be $33,740 to do that portion of the roof. Mayor, that's all I have right now.
Okay, so we've kind of run into a little bit of a dilemma because of the weather. We certainly would like to just Band-Aid, put a Band-Aid on that and then have the luxury of having good weather and being able to repair it at a later date. However, we also run the risk of not repairing it and then having water run underneath the temporary fix that Chief Heiser and the captain and his officers did. So the hope is, is that we'll have a window, an opportunity here to be able to do just the one portion of the roof for $33,740 and then later on in the spring, take a look at repairing the other side, the other half essentially. Maybe a little less than half. But, so, you know, I wanted the council to be aware that, you know, we were gonna, we were gonna have to look for an opportunity in the weather and hopefully be able to repair that. That's going to be the cost to do it. Would it be appropriate or not to have a motion then for a repair on that roof with a cost of $33,740?
Is there, excuse me, is there any reason why I cannot wait for two weeks?
The only reason that it wouldn't, may not wait for two weeks is, I think if he has a chance with the weather, that he would probably want to start that and then finish it if it looks like he's gonna have good enough weather to do it. Or if we could get, can we get a show of hands from the council and then come back? I mean...
You can certainly do that. I did not realize this was gonna be on the agenda this evening for asking them for authorization, so I've not done the research. There are some situations in which, in emergency situations, you can make fixes that need to be done for life safety purposes. But generally, number one, this exceeds the bidding authority of the city, so you'd have to do competitive bidding or waive that by a supermajority vote of the city council. And second, because it's not on the agenda, it'd be violating the Open Meetings Act to vote upon it tonight. So unless it's a true emergency where we can find a way to waive those issues, my recommendation would be wait two weeks.
Okay, and then if we do run into bad weather and then we do have a thaw, if we do have snow on that roof, we're gonna have damage, just so everybody understands, we will have damage on the inside of that because the water already was running into the living quarters at the fire station.
And again, there's nothing wrong with a show of hands tonight to see if they support it.
Yeah.
If we run into a situation where there's an emergency occurring because we're having those kinds of situations, you fix it and ask for forgiveness later.
Correct, and I think what we don't want to get into is, we know that we're gonna have to fix this. This is gonna have to be repaired. There's no question about it. So Alderman Snowy, I have you here. But we know that we're going to have to repair it. We certainly don't want to incur any further damage that's gonna add to it. So, you know, I think it would be, the prudent thing to do would be to go ahead and at least fix the half that is damaged from the wind and then certainly at least get a show of hands here from the, from the council. So Alderman Snowy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, can't we actually put this on the agenda next week and have a special city council write after that to vote on that particular item?
Yeah, you can do a special meeting next week if you want, is either before or immediately after committee of the whole.
One thing I guess I'm not for sure is if, let's say, we do have a break in the weather and we, this individual, is able to start that job prior to the council getting to that special meeting. You know, I think that would be, as I said, that would probably be the cost-effective, prudent thing to do, to repair it. I will say that I think the chief had given us, in the past, whenever this project was going to be, was being looked at, budgeted. This was by far and away the most reasonable bid that we had. It wasn't that this was the high bid. It certainly wasn't the medium bid. It would have been the most reasonable bid by far. So it's not that, you know, we're out to recklessly spend funds, but instead to save money here, taxpayer money. So, older woman Freeman?
Thank you. So Chief, this outfit, they could do it like immediately? They're not a few weeks out, is my first question for you. And then, this has already been bid, correct, in the past? So is that bid still not good, so we wouldn't have to waive the bidding process again?
On the first one, Alderman? Okay, so...
This is the first time I put this out, we didn't put out for bids, so to speak. We put it for quotes, and then second, on your second question, for quotes.
I had received three quotes, and they were, obviously, one of them, so. And then to your first question, yeah, certainly, the window of opportunity during the winter, as we all know, is really small. So the chance right now, I think, we're not seeing any precipitation or any snowfall or anything in the next 10 days, 14 days, or whatever. So that would be beneficial to this company coming out and taking care of it. They're thinking two to three days, once they got here. So they'd have to bring a boom out and set up and all the different things for roofing.
Okay, but I mean, like, they're not already booked out for those good days? They're like available to come as soon as we okay it?
Yeah, it sounds like that he can get out here. Yes. Okay, yes.
Yes.
My concern, if we were to delay any repairs, would be if we do incur further water damage, if there becomes water within the walls structurally and we incur needing to have mold remediation, things like that done, and that can get very expensive.
Chief?
Yeah, to add to that, older woman, we have plaster in that room. So it's, it's very expensive to repair. Not many people even do it. So that's, that whole bedroom is plaster walls and ceiling.
Again, if there's general consensus this evening, there's nothing, nothing to prevent the council from ratifying the mayor's execution agreement at a future date, if it comes to that.
So I'm looking for, I guess, a show of hands that would agree that if we get an opportunity here with the weather, that we address it and... Okay, and if we do, is there anybody opposed? If we do, we'll address it. Who knows? If you get snow standing on that, on that, we're really gonna have a problem because he's not gonna be able to do that roof, and then as it thaws, it's gonna create a big problem for us. So high winds, got it, and here we are. Chief?
Yeah, one, one more thing, Mayor. Any older person would like to talk to me on, about this, I'd be happy to talk to them, so. All right.
Alderman Burden?
Thanks, Mayor. So you said there was an insurance claim filed?
Yeah, we do have an insurance claim filed. The adjuster has not been here. I'm thinking tomorrow he'll be here. So, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And the other thing, keep in mind, if, you know, we have a insurance adjuster come out and take a look at it, obviously, if it goes on, you know, we're gonna have repairs that we're gonna have to make inside as well, so. And not, not counting anything that older woman Prather had talked about regarding any other mitigation that we might have to do. I think it would probably be a good idea to go ahead and do it. It doesn't happen very often. We can get, if, if we even have, are able to get out there, certainly provide you with the quotes that the chief had before this occurred. Take a look at them and see for yourself. I think in one of them, I quote a lot. It's sizable, so. Anyhow, we'll keep you abreast on that and hope for good weather and hopefully we can fix it before it gets any worse. Thank you. Under item six, special, special messages and proclamations, we have Jessica Perrello from the Boone County Health Department and Michelle Schwartz from the Belvidere Police Department here. They have a presen, hi, welcome. Nice to see you. They have a presentation for us this evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. I was here in the beginning of my position about nine months ago as the program manager for our Department of Justice grants and for the Boone County Behavioral Health Task Force. So nice to see you again. I felt that it was important to update you all about every six months or so, depending on our progress of the program. You all approved a position here, the community law enforcement officer through the city of the police department, the city of Belvidere Police Department. So I felt that it was a good idea to come, talk to you all about how we're doing in the program and answer any questions you may have. So just a reminder, we have two Department of Justice grants. Our core grant, which was awarded in 2019, which funds the program manager position, our program navigator position, and partially the jail nurse. Our second grant, which was awarded in 2020, which funds the community law enforcement officer position that you all approved, and a counselor from Rosecrans to be full-time in our local jail. Both of these grants were awarded for three years and are renewable for another three years, both of which together total about $1.2 million for the county of Boone to work on behavioral health. I'm not gonna go through every team member, but some of those names should sound a little familiar to you. I don't do this by myself, so those are multiple people on our team that are out every day trying to make this program happen. So the purpose of the task force and our overall programming is to really decrease the emotional and financial tension that we see in the community and on our community members due to behavioral health symptoms. So when I say behavioral health, I'm talking about mental health, addiction, and domestic violence. We try to eliminate barriers for treatment and increase access to our local community resources. Our overall goal, if we're doing our job right, we should see a decrease in burnout for first responders, a decrease in drug use and overdose rates, an increase in utilization of our local community resources that we already have, and of course, fill any gaps in the community. I have a couple speakers today and some data to show you that will show that we are already decreasing burnout for first responders and increasing utilization for our community resources. For the purpose of this presentation, I'm gonna focus solely on the position that you all approved in June, which is our community law enforcement officer position, the position currently held by Officer Michelle Schwartz. I do want to thank you for approving this position. We have seen an overwhelmingly amount of positive support through the community. We've been able to help a lot of people, save a lot of lives, so you deserve just as much thanks as the rest of us. I also spoke with our mayor previously, and I would like to invite someone who is passionate and wants to be more involved from the city council to sit on our task force so that they can see all of the daily things that we are doing. So if this is something that interests you throughout my presentation, please speak to the mayor for approval for that. So why connect with law enforcement? Why is it so important that we have a law enforcement officer on our team? Nine times out of 10, someone who's struggling with behavioral health is gonna come in contact with law enforcement before they come in contact with any treatment provider. Just for some quick data, we polled behavioral health law enforcement calls for service from January 1st to October 31st, 2021. As you can see, those numbers are high. We also included domestic-related calls. As more often than not, either mental health or substance use are involved in those calls, so we also help with that as well. A high utilizer population is something I want to talk about. A high utilizer is a term that was coined by programs that are similar to ours. It is a smaller population, but they have constant first responder contact due to behavioral health reasons. So multiple 911 calls, multiple calls to dispatch, multiple EMS and fire calls. And we do, just like any other county, we have a population of high utilizers here as well. To give you an idea of what we are initially seeing, we have received referrals for about 14 people that have met the criteria of having constant first responder contact due to behavioral health. Total so far in 2021, we've received 331 calls for dispatch from 14 people. Fire and EMS also got called out 67 times, and 17 times it resulted in a jail booking. So I want you to keep in mind, this is only 14 people so far that we've seen since June that have been struggling enough with their behavioral health to generate the amount of calls. As you can imagine, they require a large amount of resource and time for our first responders to try to help. So that's really where we come in. It's kind of our bread and butter, working with the people that need us the most. So some officer data for Officer Schwartz, kind of how she spends her days. The referrals that she gets are primarily sent to her through her coworkers, through other city officers and county deputies. So far, since June, she's receiving about an average of 34 referrals a month. That means that 34 times in a month, one of our officers or deputies are out meeting up with someone that has, or that's struggling with behavioral health. And typically, these programs take some time to get started, but once she was appointed in June, that very month, 27 times, an officer or deputy showed up in her office having contact with someone that struggles with behavioral health that could use her services. So far, with all of those referrals, she's generated over 500 contacts with community members since June. With law enforcement now as a team member, we have been running this program since 2019. So we have still been taking referrals from law enforcement even before Officer Schwartz's position. So when you look at the referrals that we received through law enforcement prior to her position, we were successful in linking those, those individuals to community resources 25% of the time. Once her position came and we were able to have a law enforcement officer on our team, all our referrals from law enforcement are now linked to community resources 85% of the time. So as you can see, that's a very important number to us. We want to make sure that people are getting the services that they need, and having a law enforcement officer on our team has drastically given us the ability to do so. To show the utilization in local community resources, I have asked Casey Dreeson from Youth Services Network to read something that she wrote that talks about how Officer Schwartz has helped Youth Services Network with their referrals from Boone County.
Good evening. My name is Casey Dreeson with Youth Services Network. I'm gonna redo the letter that I wrote. I didn't know I was speaking tonight, so bear with me. I'm writing this letter to express my gratitude for the community law enforcement officer position supported through the Behavioral Health Task Force and the Support Outreach Recovery Team. I want to elaborate on how having Officer Michelle Schwartz has positively impacted my program and the services available to Boone County youth and families. I'm employed by Youth Services Network as a supervisor of the Comprehensive Community-Based Youth Services Program, also known as CCBYS moving forward. CCBYS provides 24/7 crisis intervention services to youth and families, to youth specifically, who are locked out, have run away, or are beyond control of their parent. Additionally, we provide case management services to discretionary referrals for youth who are at risk of crisis or at risk of delinquency. These referrals come from law enforcement, probation, parole, community members, educators, parents, and more. The discretionary referrals are of utmost importance because they allow for services to be provided prior to a situation escalating to a full-blown crisis, often which requires law enforcement intervention. During the summer of 2021, I was fortunate enough to meet with Officer Schwartz and Jessica Perrello to discuss the work being spearheaded by the Behavioral Health Task Force and the Support Outreach Recovery Team. We immediately saw how we could work together to provide additional community services to the youth and families of Boone County. YSN has provided CCBYS services to Winnebago and Boone Counties for many years. Despite the services being available, with YSN received zero referrals from Boone County during fiscal year '21. During the first six months of fiscal year '22, which was July 1st for us, we have received 29 referrals so far. This significant increase would not be possible without Officer Schwartz. Officer Schwartz can review the police reports and determine a child would be appropriate for services through her position as a law enforcement officer. This is crucial and early intervention and something we rely on heavily to help keep officers on the street. Furthermore, Officer Schwartz responds to these families to help connect them to appropriate services, which ultimately promotes a positive relationship between police and the community. As community-based social workers, my team is often expected to go into unfamiliar homes and neighborhoods without knowing whether there are weapons in the home or any criminal or mental health history in which we should be aware. Having a direct contact within the police department helps ease these concerns by having a resource to reach out to in questionable situations. Officer Schwartz has gone above and beyond in offering to assist case managers to ensure their safety, for which I cannot thank her enough. It is through the position held by Officer Schwartz and our continued collaboration that will allow the youth and families of Boone County to continue to receive free, community-based services. I look forward to working with her and all of the many contributors of Boone County for years to come. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. We also had another speaker from the Patrol Division of the city of Belvidere. He was unable to make it tonight, but he did read, he did write us a letter to show how Officer Schwartz's position has not only impacted the community, but has impacted her fellow police officers. I will read it now. Hello. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight with you all. Thank you for allowing this to be read into the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council members. Thank you, guests. My name is Matthew Shuck. I'm a police officer with the Belvidere Police Department and have been for the last 15 years. I have lived and worked in Boone County almost all of my life. I have chosen to raise a family here. This program that is being talked about this evening is, I believe, a great resource to our community. It is something that I believe is saving lives and making a positive impact. I just wanna take a few short moments to speak of the benefits that the Patrol Division at the Police Department has experienced in response to the program. As a Patrol Division, I believe that we are better prepared for situations that involve behavioral health issues since the inception of this program. We now know of services that can be provided to our citizens that are experiencing these issues instead of kicking the can down the street for it just to be dealt with again another day. We are able to provide real help, not just empty encouraging words. Officer Schwartz has made herself available to officers to discuss these behavioral health situations that come up and direct us how to handle those situations the next time. When we as officers have a call that involves those needing or seeking help, we will refer those to her. And I know from my visits to her office, she has a full caseload and is always taking on more. We have a lot of people in need in our community, and not always just in need of going to jail, but in need of help that we as patrol officers are not always able to provide. At least not in the capacity that someone in position of the Community Law Enforcement Officer is able to. This program is also there for the family of those suffering with behavioral problems. The family is often the forgotten part of the equation. It's hard, as an officer sometimes, to walk away from a call when you know the family is at wits' end and we have no hope to offer. But now, with the program, we can get them in touch with the resources that can offer them hope. We are able to funnel those resources through Officer Schwartz, who works hard to make sure those families are getting the help they also need. The workload we experience on patrol and the number of follow-ups that we do in reference to these types of calls, I believe anecdotally are going down and will continue to. We often have had to deal with certain people several times each shift and maybe 10 to 20 times in a week or two. That's the kicking the can down the road I referenced. That occurred because we didn't have the resources or didn't know what resources were available. We now can refer those cases to Officer Schwartz, which cuts down on the continued follow-up calls we do, thus freeing up officers for other calls for service. Lastly, programs are a great thing, but ultimately, you need the right people in those programs or they don't function smoothly. We have the right person in Officer Schwartz. She is passionate about the work she does, passionate about helping those in crisis, and passionate about helping their families. Her background of working with troubled individuals prior to her law enforcement career, as well as her experience accumulated while working as a police officer, has been evident and appreciated. My belief is that this program is already showing its worth and will continue to do so. Not only is it giving help to those that need it, but it is also bridging the gap between those who have a mistrust of police and the officers themselves. This program is a credit to Boone County, to the city council for approving the grant, and to those working in their varied roles for the program to work as well as it has. Thank you again for allowing me to speak briefly on the benefits felt by the Belvidere Police Department as it relates to this program. Some success stories that we've seen already so far with referrals that have directly come through Officer Schwartz's position. A domestic violence victim who had no friends or family in the area called the police because she didn't have any other resources. Officer Schwartz was able to help move her out of her home, live with a friend out of state, and continues to reach out thanking the police department. An individual called looking for treatment, which, with the help of the rest of our outreach team, a detox bed was found in 20 minutes, and the individual was transported that day. A domestic violence victim who had been in an abusive marriage for over 40 years decided to reach out for help, was able to receive legal services and leave the marriage. And a homeless individual that came through a call for service was able to find housing, treatment, food, clothes, and have a job interview lined up, all within one hour of coming through. He did get the job, by the way. And he still calls to say thank you. Some of the positive responses we've seen from the community that have been directly quoted through emails and thank you letters. "I really don't know where I would be today if it wasn't for you. I thank God every day for bringing you an alley into my life. You could've dropped me off and left, but you didn't. You guys have been there for me every step of the way. I'm truly blessed. I appreciate you coming by more than you will ever know. This has been a rough year and a half dealing with all of this. It has been a lot on all of us as a family, but no matter what, thank you. We thought all hope was lost. Thank you so much for caring about my children's health and well-being. The outreach program is the best thing you could have ever done. It is the one hope for our family and our city." At this time, I'd like to ask Officer Schwartz to speak about her experience. That'll be our last speaker, and then I will be back to answer questions or any comments.
Thank you. Officer Schwartz, good evening.
For those of you that do not know me, I'm Officer Michelle Schwartz. I've been a police officer for 19 years, and I was appointed to this position on June 1st. Upon initially hearing about this position, I knew with my background and my experience that I was the ultimate one to take on this role. I want to thank all of you for allowing me to have the most rewarding job I've ever done. I've received so much positive feedback from individuals and their family members. We've been told several times, "Thank you for saving my life. Thank you for being there for me. I can't believe a cop helped me get into treatment and drove me." I can personally say, when we show up to people's houses after a police-related behavioral health call, people are shocked, surprised, and grateful that a police officer is showing up at their door to follow up and offer solutions and problem-solving techniques to resolve the issues that are going on in their home. Families are no longer feeling hopeless once receiving resources to help their loved ones. This is a very new and innovative approach to police work. And from what I've seen so far, I can say I believe that this is making Belvidere a better community to live in. So thank you for allowing this program to assist our citizens in their most dire time.
Thank you, Officer Schwartz.
I will take any questions or comments.
Anybody? Chief Pfizer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say, Jessica, thanks for coming with your team to our station and then educating all of our guys on what you, what you do. So it was very informational. And then also coming up here, Officer Schwartz, you'll be coming on the 10th, 11th, and 12th to also talk to our guys and our members. And all too often, back when I was on the streets, we'd go to, we'd go to certain patients, and we'd probably see them in the next, we know we'd be back there maybe the next day, the next week. So hopefully, this will take care of some of that and take care of these people and just keep making Belvidere a better place, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So when you were talking about having somebody from the council on your board or your task force or to meet with you guys, when would that occur? What day, week, time, what kinda?
So our task force meetings, our larger task force meetings are bimonthly, at Tuesday mornings at 8:30 in the morning over Zoom. And so we welcome anyone to attend those meetings. And then, of course, to be an actual official voting member, we do ask that you attend a subcommittee, which we have multiple with multiple different focuses, that will kind of meet just when needed. Sometimes it could be once a quarter, sometimes it could be once a month, depending on if we're really working on a project.
You've said all those success stories, but do you have any, like, repeat offenders that are real difficult? That, you know, have come back repeatedly with the same problem?
We do. We do. I don't have any data right now to determine whether or not it's more than what would've normally happened or if we've decreased the amount of calls. Especially with substance abuse, recovery is really a journey. So there may be some that have relapses, that have other police calls and things like that. But our data, I'm hoping to show in the future that we've been able to lessen the amount of calls that normally would've happened.
Anybody else? You know, I, I think data is, I think this is data-driven. I think the council, whenever they had supported using the Belvidere Police Department for what essentially is a county-wide issue, county-wide problem, certainly Belvidere, part of the county, I think that as we get the data, I think it's important that we can kind of drill down so that the council and the public understands the benefits. And also, I think it's important that we also understand that this position was funded with grants that were available. And so I think it is unfortunate that sometimes, at least in the past, we used to have facilities that would help with mental health and, you know, that a lot of the state facilities, and they closed those, and they kind of, I guess they kind of forced the communities, local localities, to go ahead and deal with some of these issues. So as we proceed, I'd welcome you back and come back, give us some data on some of the differences so that they can, the council and the public can gauge for themselves the importance of it. And I appreciate your coming here tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Moving on, we have item seven, approval of expenditures. We have none. We have item eight, committees, committee reports and minutes of city officers. We have none. Item nine, unfinished business under item A, ordinance number 559H for a second reading here this evening. An ordinance vacating a portion of an alley generally lying north of 121 North State Street in the city of Belvidere, Illinois, and that was tabled. We need a motion to bring that off the table. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. All those in favor, please. Do we have to have a roll call vote on to bring it off the table or just voice phone? We'll have a roll call vote. Those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Mr. Mayor, according to clerk, there was previously a motion to pass this ordinance before the table. Is that correct?
No.
So you will need a motion to approve ordinance 559H and a second.
Okay, we have a motion, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion? Okay. Need a roll call vote on that, is that correct? We'll have a roll call vote. All those in favor will answer yes. Any opposed, no, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And we have item B, ordinance number 562H for a second reading. Excuse me, an ordinance granting a special use to allow accessory outdoor storage within the planned industrial district located at 1930, 30 through 1960, West Chrysler Drive. Do we have a motion that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that? Or any questions? Gina's here with us this evening. I'm sure she'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Okay, hearing done. All those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed, thank you. And item C, ordinance 563H for a second reading. An ordinance re-adopting and affirming ordinance 506G and ordinance providing for the number of aldermen in the city of Belvidere. Do we have a motion that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions? Any comments? So we'll, we'll be staying at 10. Okay, hearing done. All those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed, and we do have no new business. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay. For the record, we adjourned at 7:45. Thank you, everybody, and Happy New Year.